Good morning, and welcome to the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, September 12th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present.
Chair Renode.
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
You would please stand for our pledge allegiance, followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you this morning, and Lord, we pray, God, that our nation would come together as they did seventeen years ago on this date, and, God, that we would focus our attention more on helping each other and coming together in unity. Father, I ask you to be with us this morning, give us guidance, give us knowledge to make good decisions, be with our people and our county today, bless those that are working for us to provide the services that we need, and all these things we ask. Amen.
Okay. Any correspondence or organizational business, Derek?
Nope.
Okay, public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
We have Gene Hurt.
Gene?
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, well, you're right, Richard, about unity, but I'm afraid I don't have much of that right now, what I need to say, unfortunately. I have to bring this out because I feel it needs to be addressed, because it's never been this way before. Again, here's another issue of the fifteen years, sixteen years now, be what it is now, since I've been active and involved in politics in the county. And the issue I have is this. Since now the election is over now between Randall and Don Stahlmeier, there comes a point now that has to be brought out, and I asked Janet Paddock to make sure she gets this all in the minutes, and the radio stations here get it on the minutes, because I think it needs to be addressed. Okay. Four years ago, right over here along these double doors, after the election when Randall won the election, and this is, this has to do with, let me speak to what I'm gonna get to, why I'm bringing this up. Don Stahlmeier came to me over there, to them double doors, and he walked up to him and he wouldn't look at me. All he do was held his hand out and says, "I'm sorry for all the wrong things I did and the people I hurt since I was commissioner." And I looked at him, and he wouldn't look at me, and I said, "Don, I forgive you, Don," but I said, "You're talking to the wrong people. You're not talking to the right man. You need to be talking to the people that you hurt, not me." And so, this is the reason why now I have to bring out, and shortly afterwards on that issue, here he goes, and I only emphasized to him, "Don't run for county commissioner again because of what you did." But then he turns around and he puts his name in for the Franklin County Planners. Okay, now that brings the issue up at hand now. He cannot serve anymore as a Franklin County Planner because that's a conflict of interest. When he becomes on to, as a commissioner, first of the year, he can't be on it, for sure. And right now, with him being on there, he's gonna be an influence, and he's gonna be voting on issues like one that's coming in September the 20th here shortly. And I think that, that's gonna be an influence he's gonna throw to this board here. And so, his interest lies in that area to get his agenda already going, because I know him. I know what he's done in the past. So, now you got a situation now, you board put him on there four years ago, and the other person that was, wanted that job didn't get it, because you put him on there because of his experience. But now, now is a different situation now. Now. So, I think you better look that through real close, because I'm gonna be watching myself, and I'm gonna be watching how he votes and how he speaks because of what he's gonna relay and has brought to this board for issues that brought before this board. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is that the only one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. The only item on there is to approve the commission meeting minutes for September 5th, 2018, and I will let you know that on the regular agenda, I plan to switch items one and two in the order we talk to them.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
On the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, our first item then will be to consider for approval, a request from the Ottawa High School Student Council to use the courthouse lawn for our homecoming block party. Did I come up, please? State your name and address.
Caroline Weber is here today from the student council to visit with you guys about this.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Caroline Weber, and I'm the vice president of Ottawa High School Student Council. We celebrate our homecoming week, the first week of October, and we are requesting permission to use the courthouse lawn on Wednesday, October 3rd, for our annual block party. This is an important event for our student council, our school, and the local community.
So, did your president assign you this task because she has the right to do that? Is that the deal?
It's just tradition.
Oh, tradition. Okay.
Don't get carried away with any wild thoughts now, right?
Checking on that, just seeing what's happening there. Who's the opponent that weekend for homecoming game?
I actually don't know. I'm focused on block party and nothing else.
Things are changing. When I first started doing this, they used to bring about five or six of you, and now you got it all on your own, huh? Wow.
She's very trustworthy.
They sent the A-team, that's it.
Think we'd be happy to. I don't think we need to vote.
Consensus then, gentlemen, allow that to...
Absolutely. Appreciate your using our downtown and whatever else, and hope your kids have a good, safe evening.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Caroline.
Okay, our next item on the agenda then will be to consider for approval, entering into an employment agreement with Derek Brown for services as county administrator and county counselor. I think we've seen pretty much the proposal from you, your thing and your evaluation has been taking place, so Derek?
Yeah, my, my contract is attached, as we discussed briefly during my eval. There's no material change to the contract that I am currently under. This will serve effectively as an extension. One of the primary reasons why I would like to do this, as we've said, is my anniversary with the county is this month. This is when I get my evaluation, so there's some efficiency in just running my contract from this month forward. One of the things that has concerned me is we were on the cusp of a lot of turnover within the organization. Like, I have a lot of department heads who are, I mean, who've announced their retirement. I mean, the next couple of years especially, I think, could be, and I think having some stability at the top of the organization is important, and frankly, some of the individuals that I've contacted, that I've expressed interest in them applying for these positions, several times I've been asked, okay, well, what's, what's your status? And they've indicated, you know, they, they think they could potentially work for me, but just given the natural change of the board and changes sometimes happens in this position, they, they question that, and I think this would also help me on that front. I'm not using this as an opportunity to ask for more money. The, I, I am scheduled to receive a merit increase this month, which is the same merit increase that all eligible employees receive on their anniversary, but there's no additional terms within the contract that have been changed outside of the four-year term and, you know, a similar renewal, so I would stand for any questions that you have.
Anybody have a question for Derek?
The only thing I had a question about Derek, I know we have a monthly auto allowance, driving allowance, has, as you've moved downtown and so forth, I mean, do you, you see that being still sufficient and not a problem, and so it's...
Yeah.
Covers what you pretty much have to do?
Yeah, I think it's sufficient. I mean, it's, it's just, whereas before I would drive down to the courthouse often and handle business, now I'm just going back to the annex or over to the Justice Center. So, yeah, there's, I appreciate the question, but there's no material change there, so.
Oh, is there any public comment now?
No.
Okay. If not, I'd be open to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to enter to an employment grant with Derek Brown for his services as county administrator and county counselor.
Was that useful? Okay. Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes.
Hey, Randy, before we move on, I do wanna say that this is not an opportunity that I take for granted, and I wanna say that to the board. I, every day, I'm appreciative of the opportunity that I get to work with the individuals in this county, and I'm excited for where we're going, but certainly appreciate the faith that you guys have and want you to know, it's not anything that I think I'm ever gonna take for granted, and so, thank you.
Alrighty. Moving on then, the next item, consider supporting United Way for contributing to their annual fundraisers, our mystery, mystery event theaters. Come on up, Meg.
Good morning. All right, did any of you guys go last year to my event? So, for those of you who are not aware, this is very fun for us. What we're doing is we're creating a mystery. We have a dinner or a brunch that the community can choose from, but it's the same mystery both times, it's just different dates so that we can increase people attending. Anyway, the way that it operates is that you get there and we tell you a little bit about United Way and how we work, and then something goes horribly wrong, and everybody in the room has to work together to actually solve the mystery, which is a lot of fun, and it says a lot about United Way and how we operate in general, how we all work together in this community to solve a lot of problems. So, we use that as kind of the, the idea of the whole event, and so, the individual tables of ten work together as a team to beat the other tables of ten, and it's a lot of fun. It works a little bit like Clue, where you get to solve the mystery by the who, whats, wins, and wheres on the detective cards, and there's puzzles on your table, but it's a blast. And the food has been traditionally pretty good as well, and that's the plan again this year. So, that's how that operates. What we do with those dollars is that we use them to help facilitate direct services here in Franklin County for Franklin County residents. Those dollars help us for the list that's in front of you, so you'll be able to identify that as American Red Cross, Big Brothers Big Sisters, CASA, Children's Mercy Hospital, Communities and Schools, Cerebral Palsy Foundation Center, ECAN, Elizabeth Layton Center, Habitat for Humanity, Hope House, Life Care Center for Women, Mid-American Nutrition Program is currently receiving funding. That funding will go to the area on aging as soon as they take over the Meals on Wheels program at the end of this month, so we will be continuing to fund the Meals on Wheels program. In addition to that, we have Midland Care Hospice, Tiny K Early Intervention, the Ottawa Community Arts Council's After School Program, which is known as the O-Ya. We also have the Ottawa Recreation Foundation Summer Camp Program, the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center, Willa Domestic Violence Center, and then we run our own STEM mentoring program in addition to that, through some grant funding, so that's all very exciting. So, that is what we do. We raise funds for these organizations and these programs to ensure that they are available in our community. Through the grants that we make these organizations write each year, we have an accountability process. That accountability includes a budget hearing as well as site visits, as well as reports at the end of the year as to how was, funding was used, and how many services were provided, and if you actually do the count through United Way dollars, we served 11,800 Franklin County residents last year, which is absolutely incredible. Those are people we know. Honestly, it's friends, it's family, and it's neighbors, because our population is about twenty, it's almost 26,000. It's 25,992, according to the 2010 census. So, you know, it is important that we try to continue to provide direct services here in Franklin County, and we ensure that those services are available for our residents. So, that's what this fundraiser does. You guys have questions?
Derek, in the past, what have we done with our tickets that we've purchased and so forth? Have they been given to departments, or does anybody remember what we've done? I, I'd kinda wondered about a, a silent auction with, with employees, but maybe that's, donation is, either way, I, I don't know. Just, that's all I had.
I think a raffle's a nice perk.
Yeah, just say... Yeah, if they, some, some type of a, I don't know, reimbursement type bid. I mean, that way, there's, if you put it in, you want it just as a raffle, or do you want it...
Well, I mean, just like, like Gail has been doing, it seems like a nice perk for...
Okay, yeah, okay.
And then, you guys will see before you that there are several levels of sponsorship, and so, I do know that I have pitted you guys against the city in the past, and last year, I know that they did a $600 sponsorship, and I have a, I've met with Gaila, or I mean, sorry, Gaila, I've met with Laura, and she was going to get me before the city, so I actually haven't made this presentation to them yet, but if you guys wanna start the competition rolling, I could do that.
They sent the right person to this meeting, didn't they?
Well, if you don't ask.
There you go. That's right. Well, there are several, several different sponsorships available, so I'm, I'm open.
You say we had the one table last year?
Yes, sir.
And was it the same amount last year?
Last year, I, I encouraged, you guys did a $250 sponsorship. I wanted Franklin County representatives at that event, so I actually gave you guys a full table for the discounted rate, because I wanted you guys to participate and learn more about United Way and meet other United Way, like, organizations, because we have both member agencies and volunteers and people who are, sit on our board, and CEOs who are part of the payroll deduction campaigns, who were all at that event, and I wanted you guys to be able to mingle with them and learn more.
Be open to a table?
Sure.
Four seats?
Ten, I believe, is the table, is that what you said?
Ten. A table is ten. Yes, that is correct.
Seems like a consensus for ten. I guess I make a motion to sponsor for, United Way for one table, $600.
Thank you very much. That's very generous. Excellent.
Second?
Seconded.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
I'll abstain, since I'm the board president.
Chair Renode?
Yes.
Oka-doki. We will have that done then.
Thank you very much. You guys should come. It's gonna be a blast.
Thank you, Meg.
Oh, I'm very sorry, Gene wanted to comment on this item.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm very sorry, Gene. I, that's, that's my mistake. They...
Come on up, Gene.
Well, the thing I wanna say here is, is this. Megan did a real good job there telling about, you know, the Meals on Wheels now. See, now that's going over to, they're gonna do, they're gonna take care of that part. She's involved with it, what you just said, right?
Yes.
Okay. See, now that's where I come in, because that's where my deal is, and that's one thing I don't want to go away, because of what it does for this service in this county and other counties at all. And I think, and how much is that? What, what, what did you just vote on? $250 or what?
600.
600?
Mm-hmm, which is a, a whole table, which is more than what we did last year.
It sure is. Okay, all right, because I thought it was 250 from what she was saying. If you're gonna do the 600, that's great. That, that, that's much more than, and that's, that's more adequate than 250. And so, I thank you for doing that then, if you did do that. All right, thank you.
Sorry about that, Gene.
And, and you're right, Mr. Hurt, and there's several, I, several of those organizations that we donate directly to the county, as well as through United Way, and to reinforce that. I think that's very appropriate, right? And I'm sorry we didn't get you in before the vote, but I, we'll take the gradu-, we'll take the congratulations anyway. Next, next item on the agenda then is considered for approval, granting permanent access easement across certain property being used as a parking lot for ransom memorial patients in favor of Frank Enterprises. Derek?
Yeah, if you can envision the hospital, they, in the not-too-distant past, constructed a new parking lot there, south of the hospital. It's kinda, it's just a touch southwest, and it's right adjacent, like, literally east of Frank Eye Center. That parking lot has an entrance into Frank to where you can drive through the parking lot and get to Frank Eye Center. Conversely, you can drive from the street into Frank Eye Center, obviously, and then get to the parking lot. Both the hospital and Frank, you know, they're okay with this, but it's never been formalized in an easement, and that's the purpose of this item. This is just a formal easement, because we own the hospital, we have to grant it to Frank, and he's gonna grant us back a reciprocal easement just for the benefit of ransom patients, so.
Is it similar to like, probably Advance Auto or Dollar Tree, where they don't have access to the street?
Right. If I could, get a motion then for that?
I make a motion to execute the attached permanent access easement.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes.
Okay. Next item would be considered for approval, awarding the tire bid, number one, to Best Drive Commercial Tires. Bids two, three, and five to GCR Tires, and bids four and six to Kansasland. Jim?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
As you stated, the department requested fax tire bids, one through six. Best Drive Commercial Tires submitted the best price for bid number one. GCR submitted the best price for bids two, three, and five. Kansasland Tire submitted the best prices for number four and six, and it is recommended they be awarded. Bid number four had three with the same price, so we can conduct the lottery. Request a motion awarding tire bids.
Anybody have any questions? All the bids there? Motion?
I move to award bid number one to Best Drive Commercial Tires, bid number two, three, and five to GCR Tires, and bid number four and six to Kansasland Tire.
Second?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renode?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioner.
Ah, thank you, Jim. Okay, that takes us into staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, the journal entry for our tax sale was filed last week, and so, that is effectively the document that we submit before the court, asking them to approve of the, the tax sale. So, from there, there are certain statutory waiting periods. I think we have to publish the notice three weeks in a row. Nevertheless, the tax sale is largely complete. We're in the midst of that waiting period, and soon we'll schedule the actual sale with Sheriff Richards, so that sale is coming to an end. This month, a new set of properties will become eligible. I believe the 2014 properties will become eligible, and then the City of Ottawa, and working with our mutual bond council, has mentioned to me an interest in the Cove's properties, putting them on for tax sale, because they're finally, I think, forming a solution on what to do with those properties. So, we may very well turn right around, or I may very well turn right around and recommend to the board that we start another tax sale, but once we're through with that, I mean, we're gonna have a really clean tax roll effectively, so that's, you know, we haven't had that in a long time. So, this sale that's about complete has went a long way towards that goal, and then if we got the Cove's taken care of, that, that would be huge, so.
Because, Derek, does the process, once you start that, encourage people then, once they get their letter, then to come in and pay up on their taxes? Not, not all of them go to sale, of course, but it's an encouragement that they could lose their property and it spurs the payment of...
And a, and a ton of people have done that. We started out with what would have been a huge tax sale, and a consistent stream of those folks did end up paying their taxes, and so, yeah, that...
So, without some regular program in place to do that, you, you get back into this same position where your delinquent tax rolls are pretty significant?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's, that's correct.
People see there's no consequence. You're right. There's no reason to do that. When they see that happen, yeah, it's no bother. I think so.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a reason to wait three, three years before they become eligible for the tax sale?
It's just law. I mean, statutorily, that's what our legislature has determined, is the waiting period, so. I don't believe I have anything else for the board today, so.
Nick?
Good morning.
Morning.
I wanted to talk to you guys about a program we just instituted at the Communications Center, in case you hear about it from any of the fire departments. We put in a secondary notification system. In the past, the fire department, the fire association paid for a program called e-Dispatch, which was a scanner that listened for a tone that was specific for that department, and then it would send them an alert, and then they'd have to actually listen to it. We have been trialing a product called Active 911. It works with the Tyler CAD system that we have, so when they move a, a department over, it actually sends them a message, a page, like a pager. When they look at that, it gives them the address. They click on it, it actually gives them mapping from their location to that address, plus it gives them some call notes of what's going on. So, for instance, with a structured fire, it might say flames showing, occupants in the house, all that, they'll have on their phone. So, if they do miss the dispatch, they have those addresses and stuff. We've enacted that with all the fire departments. We got a couple more to get up and running, but they all have access to it. This will also allow us to do some notifications for the law enforcement agencies too, so we can go in and specify if it's an injury accident, who... So it gives us a lot of opportunities, and the dispatchers don't have to do anything except for move people over to the call to get those notifications. So that's something we just enacted. It's being tested at this time. Everybody that I know is using it has, is liking it, so I'm thinking of something we're probably moving forward. It does give us a secondary notification also. So if the event does happen, radios would happen to go down, or we would lose some kind of notification system. We still can push us out with, without having those, so something we needed, and we've got it implemented. Other things, just to knock on wood for a minute, we do have all of our people in dispatch, so we're enacting the float position as of next month. We'll have it up and running as long as we stay full staff, and EMS is full staff, so. Had a good tractor show, not a lot of problems there, so getting ready for the car show this weekend.
Nick, does that eliminate the need for a lot of those departments to have the radio pagers and all that? Because those were pretty pricey at one time, I know that.
With going to the new digital system, just to carry pager was almost $800. So, yeah, this, this will eliminate that, plus it should eliminate and help with some call back procedures.
It gives them a lot more information.
It gives them information. The other thing that they can do with it is when you get that, it's an app, and when that tone comes out, it gives you five options. It gives you available, unavailable, in route, at station, or cancel. So it gives the fire departments a chance to know who's coming to that. If they don't have a radio, if they are carrying a pager, even, they can pull up and in real time know who's responding to that. The other things it does if, if they allow it, is it'll give GPS locations of everybody that's responding. So they know that they may have people in audible responding to Richmond, so they can start doing a little better practices on figuring out what their needs are and what they're gonna have when they get there. So I think as this thing advances, we're gonna get a lot better information out there. You can also utilize this. So in the past, you probably heard in Pejat County Fire Meetings or Fire Meetings or different meetings over. Now the fire chief can go to his app and say, "Fire meeting, yada, yada." And their crew, those people that get it can say they're available or unavailable, so he knows if he's gonna have a successful meeting or not. So some really good features with it that we found, and we're in the one-month planning stage now. We got a free trial of it for a month to play with, to get it all up and going, and it's, it's showing success. So if you do hear about it, that's what we got going on.
What's the formal name of it?
It's called Active 911.
Active 911.
Yeah, and it actually, like I said, works with the CAD system, where the other systems are a third-party where you have to have a scanner or something that listens. So if you lose an internet connection, you lose that. Where this is actually, as soon as they move it over, it sends an email to the Active 911 and pushes it out, so, a lot better system.
Is that app prior, prior, prioritized for just certain people?
Is what it does, when you, when you download the app, it asks you for an access code. So when we put people in, we give them an access code. The, the, the app is, is $11 a month per device, so the fire departments do have some cost with that, but it was significantly cheaper than the e-Dispatch, actually saving the fire departments around $1,000 a year just going with this app, so. But, yeah, they, they sign up, they get a, an access code, and when they put that in, it might be for LOH Fire, or, so whatever they're deemed that departments to get pages on though yet. So that they can't just get public getting all this information, it has to be on a department or a paid device.
Do you have to have a certain kind of phone to receive the app?
They have to have a phone to retrieve it, but the thing about it is, is this app will work on tablets, it'll work on smartphones, it'll work on the dumb phone, flip phones. So like when it goes off, it'll make a, I know the term for it, but it'll give them a phone call, and when they get that phone call, it'll say, 1550 South Cedar Apartment, yada, yada, press one for available, press two for unavailable, and give them the options so they can do it. Plus it'll also call landlines also, so they can set up and know what they want to be notified on. So it gives that. One of the big things that we've looked at, and you guys have probably seen and heard about, we've got CAD in most of our vehicles, a mobile CAD device in ambulances and that, where we can put ourselves on scene, and that's expensive to have something like that for the fire departments. And they've been asking about what it would cost for them to have an iPad or for them to have some of these devices, and this pretty much eliminates the need for the rural departments to have it because this gives them everything. Where with the county departments and that, this gives us the feedback of less radio traffic. It'd be not cost-effective to put an iPad in every fire truck in the county, but for the units that use them every day, the CAD's a good way to go. But with this, it does give something for them to have the feedback they need. So, any questions on any of that?
Works out well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, as the board knows all too well, we, we typically get calls from individuals thanking us or telling us what we're doing well. Unfortunately, it's normally the, the exact opposite, but I asked Nick to come talk because I've had a lot of folks reach out to me on this new software. I think they're incredibly happy with its capabilities and excited for, I mean, just response times, and I just think it's, it's really a home run. I mean, save some on cost, increases the level of service, so very pleased with the potential that we have there.
Okay, Jim?
Yesterday, concrete paving started on the southbound lane on Montana and continues today.
Okay. Jim, what about Vance Brothers? Are they, when are they coming back? We're now, we're starting to get back into this cold weather for all the, or not cold weather.
They're still accumulating cover material.
Seems like we're getting back to the same.
They were here for, they were here for one day.
We put a clause in the contract, didn't we?
Yes, it has to be done by October.
Really, that's why we went to putting it on the agenda early to get that done, so they, we weren't one of the last ones to get put back before the weather turned cold, and we got part of it done, but it looks like we're getting put back to the end again. And I'm getting a lot of complaints still about the Highway 50 and so forth not having lines on it, and people think it's, it's pretty dangerous that way. So where does the company come from? It actually does the striping.
Nebraska.
Nebraska's, yeah, okay.
I just want to let you guys know, we'll be programming ballots tomorrow, and we'll be sending our first ballots out the door by Saturday. Our federal application ballots have to be out by Saturday, so I know we have at least three of those now, so, and we expect to get more of those. So we'll be sending those out and then start testing and running everything for the general.
Okay. Before we go on to Commissioner Comments, Board Reports, Derek, I sent you an email. I got a phone call from the Coffee County Commissioners yesterday indicating there's a meeting September 20th.
20th, yeah.
In Pittsburgh. Apparently each district of KDOT is listening to county input, and they felt that it was very important that we participate in whatever type of project we might have. I don't know if that's something that's on the radar for anybody or not, but you might find out about. I think, I don't know if every commissioner got that email. It was sent on September the 6th as a legislative something or whatever it was, but.
Is that the same meeting we went to, Jim?
No.
No, it's a different.
No, this, this is a task force that was set up by the legislature that's going around the state in pre-designated locations.
There's actually a meeting tomorrow, I believe, in Kansas City, but they were wanting everybody from District Four to go with the one in Pittsburgh, so therefore we could get more money for District Four perhaps, or whatever they thought that we could have some more impact if we had numbers there, I guess, I don't know. But if anything else, I would suggest you go back to your September 6th emails if you deleted it, and from the Kansas Association of Counties Legislative, the way it comes out on the title line or subject line, and then you can read information about that meeting, but for somebody who's going.
I'll see if I, I don't recall as I sit here whether or not I got that email. I'm assuming I would have, and I can pull it, I, I wouldn't have deleted it, so I'll pull it and resend it to all of you, but.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and, and then, since you brought, brought it up before Board Reports, we currently don't have any, any items on the agenda for next week. I, I don't have anything to bring in front of you either to study on Monday or on next week's Wednesday agenda. I am already going to be out, and so certainly Janet is capable of running a meeting if you want to have one, but at this juncture, I would be affirmatively looking for something just to throw on an agenda so you guys can come in and, and talk about it, so.
So we're talking about on the 17th and the 19th?
I believe that to be the case, yeah.
Okay. This show, I have the joint luncheon on the 19th here. That still gonna be on?
Yep, we are still doing the joint luncheon.
Okay, so as of right now, then we would cancel the study session on Monday, September 17th, and unless somebody comes up with something, we're gonna cancel our meeting on Wednesday, the 19th, and we'll still have our joint luncheon.
Yeah, and I don't, yeah, and I don't need anything at all today. I will send out another email to my department heads, and if, you know, we get something, I'm happy to, to have either, frankly, but I think the study session is probably, I, I don't anticipate the need for a study session, the meeting. I'll, you know, I'll send another email and we'll see, but I'll be in touch with you on that.
Okay, be great.
I'm forward needing you guys that email right now. Bye, guys.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Commissioner Comments?
I can start. Went to Williamsburg City Council Monday night. It was the makeup for the holidays. Their auditor was there, talked to him for a while about his findings. Went to unfinished business, talked about a street project. They wanted to look into what it would cost them to chip and seal all their city streets instead of doing the gravel that they do every year and see if that is possible. They approved an order to change the monthly meeting time to seven o'clock. It's been 7:30, and they want to change it up to seven. Talked about their city clerk position. They're getting several applications for that position, and they discussed how they want to go about doing the interviews for that. And then they went over the boil order that was in effect a while back and just talked about how that came down and why they did it the way they did it out there. And that's all I've been to.
Okay.
Yesterday, I attended the Chamber Board meeting. They have found a tenant for the upstairs, which is significant to them being able to increase their revenue and be more fiscally solvent. They, they've had some new members that have joined, they've had some, some good things that are going on. There are a lot of activities planned this month that they're involved in. They're already looking forward to Ladies Night Out coming up in October. A lot of good things going on. Last, last Friday at the university, they had their chamber coffee for Dr. Reggie Swaniki, and it was well-attended, and as again, he, he did an outstanding job of presenting kind of his vision and his personality to the public, which I thought was really good, so that's it.
Okay.
Well, I attended President Reggie's reception there last Friday, and it looks like Ottawa University's in good hands with Regis or Reggie. And then I went to First Friday Forum last Friday, and there was a big article in the paper about, or an article in the paper about, what's that doctor's name?
Hale.
Dr. Hale, he's gonna have a seminar on mindfulness, I guess sponsored by the hospital, and if you can look at Ottawa Air, you can see how to sign up for that. That's about it.
Okay. All right, well then, if there is nothing further, I would consider a motion for adjournment.
Let's go move.
Seconded.
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned.